Yes, sir.
I nominate. Is more than qualified to serve in this position, having successfully served in this position before, and so I believe her dedicated service will serve us well this year. So I nominate Susan Smith as the chairperson of the board.
I'll second that.
All right. We have a nomination and a second. Are there any other nominations or discussions? All right. Given no additional nominations or discussions, I will call for the vote. We'll do a roll call vote. Hurt? Smith? Wade?
Aye.
Taylor?
Aye.
And Ward?
Aye.
All right. Thank you. Congratulations, Mrs. Smith. I don't know if you need this, but I'll pass it down to you. And I will turn the meeting over to you at this point.
All right. Here we go. The floor is now open for nominations for vice chair. Do I have a nomination, please?
Madam Chair?
Yes.
I make a nomination for Jeannie to serve as our...Jeannie.
Wayne.
I know. I shouldn't have called you by your first name. My apologies. Mrs. Wade to serve as our vice chair this year. I believe she'll serve well.
All right. Do I have a second? I'll second that nomination. So let's go forward and make a roll vote, please. District one?
Aye.
District three?
Aye.
District four?
That's you.
District five?
Aye.
District two, aye. All right. And let's continue on our reorg and look at school board clerk and deputy clerk.
Madam Chair?
Yes, ma'am.
I recommend reappointing Ms. Sheila Eggleston to serve as the school board clerk and Mrs. Kelsey Bryce to serve as the school board deputy clerk.
All right.
That's my recommendation for the board.
Thank you, ma'am. And can I get that in a motion, please?
I make a motion for clerk as Sheila Eggleston and deputy clerk as...I just went blank.
Bryce.
Kelsey.
Kelsey Bryce. Thank you.
Can I have a second on that, please?
Mrs. Chair, I'll make a second on that.
All right. Thank you, Mrs. Ward. And roll call vote, district one?
Aye.
Two says aye. Three?
Aye.
Four?
Aye.
And five?
Aye.
Thank you very much. Now, moving on to D., superintendent's designate. Dr. Tygen?
Yes, Madam Chair. Each year, the board approves designees in case I am unable to attend a school board meeting or to sign documents in my absence for the Virginia Department of Education. The designees for 2025 will be Dr. Angela Stewart, chief academic officer, Mrs. Courtney Jarman, chief schools officer, and Debbie Holloway, chief financial officer.
All right. And can I get that in a motion, please?
Madam Chair, I nominate, yeah, for Dr. Angela Stewart, chief academic officer, Ms. Courtney Jarman, chief of schools, and Debbie Holloway, chief financial officer. Make a motion for them to be the designees for Dr. Tygen.
And a second?
Second.
All right. And let's go ahead and keep up what we've been doing and vote on this as well for the superintendent's designate. District one?
Aye.
District two? Aye. Three?
Oh, aye.
Four?
Aye.
Five?
Aye.
All right. Discussion on school board representation for the governor's school, Code RVA, and school board advisory committees for 2025.
Madam Chair?
Yes, Mrs. Chair.
I think it would be wise and appropriate if everyone kept their same positions, particularly with Appomattox Regional Governor's School, Maggie Walker, Code RVA. As those schools, you have to become acclimated with their policies, and obviously, they're run a little bit different. Regarding the advisory committees, maybe that should be kept in the same vein. I don't know if a book review committee will be coming quite prevalent. I think that's been kind of addressed the past 12 months. Strategic plan, that's the strategic plan is finished, to my knowledge. But I do want to point out that there are other committees that are somewhat more pressing than even our advisory committees. I sent everyone emails, and I've done this several times, on four prevalent standing committees that most school boards do have at least two of these. And the purpose of the standing committee is to help ensure that all decisions are well informed and evidence-based, and it provides insights and perspectives on issues that may not be immediately obvious to the board. And you want to ensure that critical functions are managed consistently, and it really helps provide long-term oversight as boards come and go. And those four committees that I sent you information on complete with the membership protocols and actions, was the policy review committee, and, let's see, the second one was the finance standing committee. Those are probably the two most prevalent ones you need. There is also an academic curriculum standing committee, and there's also a school board discipline committee. And so I think that's something that we should address, that I have done surveying around various school boards throughout the state, both large and small school systems, and many do have these standing committees, and they see it as very helpful, as I said, in keeping consistency as boards turn over.
All right. Can we go back just a bit? And I'd like for us to address that specific concern on its own merit and talk about the first part of this discussion, which is the board representation to the Maggie...to Appomattox Regional Governor's School for Arts and Technology. So you are, Mrs. Hurt, the representative, correct?
Yes, ma'am.
And you are engaged and want to stay on as that?
I'm actually on the executive board for them.
As well. Okay, good. And so, yes, you are engaged and want to stay on there, right?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. And Maggie Walker, Governor's School, Dr. Taylor?
Yes, ma'am. I was there all morning and planned to be there Thursday, so I'd like to serve on that board again.
All right.
Just now getting my feet wet.
Okey-dokey. And Code RVA, Mrs. Wade?
Yes, I'm fine staying on there.
You're fine with staying on with that. All right. Under gifted advisory committee, that's me, and I'm good for staying on with that one. Special education advisory committee, that is...is that Mrs. Ward? That's you, right? All right. And are you good to stay there?
That is correct.
All right. Career and workforce development advisory committee, Mrs. Wade?
I'll stay.
Okay.
Mrs. Chair, could I be added to that one as well?
Well, I think we only have one board representative, but I don't think that keeps you from going to any of these meetings, if you would like to go and be up on what's going on at these advisory committee meetings.
Okay.
But just for the paperwork thing, one board member per group. But everybody's open to go to any of them.
Okay. Very good.
Okay.
Thanks for the clarification.
All right. Then we are Title I Parent Advisory Committee. That is me. I love to stay on with that one. The book review committee, I think you were spot on with that, Hurt, and your summation of its work. And School Health Advisory Committee, Mrs. Ward, is that...that's you, correct?
Yes, I'll continue on that.
Strategic Plan and Steering Committee. Madam, Dr. Tygen, Mrs. Hurt and Dr. Taylor were the original board members represented in that committee. When is...does that come up? That comes up for another review.
We try to review it annually.
Annually.
But it's a living document.
Right. So my question to Mrs. Hurt and Dr. Taylor, are you willing to stay on this planning committee, steering strategic committee, or do you want other board members to take over there?
Mrs. Smith, I'm more than happy to serve another year on that, unless there's another board member who would like to sit in on it. But if not, I'm happy to do it.
How about you, Ms. Hurt?
Oh, I'm fine with strategic planning and the strategic plan. I just hope that we give the opportunity for all board members to learn all aspects of governance on the school board. And I would hope that all of us would maybe somehow be present at the review of the strategic plan and how it's meeting the goals and objectives of the school system. I don't think it should just be, you know, two board members. I think everyone needs to see...
Absolutely. Absolutely. And that's just like any other standing committee. If you're interested in going, you may go...
Well, advisory committee.
Yes, the advisory committees to go and observe, yes. All right. So you guys will stay on then, Mrs. Hurt and Dr. Taylor, as the official representatives, but all other board members encouraged to participate when this meeting comes around. All right. Now, with that taken care of, let's address this other piece that you have brought up about additional committees. First of all, I think we need a motion to institute something new here. So do I have a motion to put this in place?
Mrs. Chair, I'd like to make a motion to discuss and review and consider these review committees. I think they're very important as well. I've read over them. I make a motion.
Standing.
Standing committee, excuse me.
All right. State your motion again for me.
I'd like to make a motion for us to consider these standing committees.
All right.
And they are...one is of Policy Review Committee.
We'll look at all of them.
Okay.
We'll look at all of them as she's presented them.
Okay.
And that way, we won't have to try to pick and choose. We'll go through all of them.
Okay.
And do I have a second?
I'll second that.
All right. So can we get a vote on this, please, to make this motion go forward, so we can either work on it or put it to bed? District one?
Aye.
District three?
Are we going to have discussion on this at all?
We're going to do discussion. This is moving forward to do discussion. Yes.
Aye.
All right. District four? This is just discussion.
I'll vote...yeah, I'll vote in affirmative.
All right. District five?
Aye.
And district two, aye. All right. So let's have a conversation.
Madam Chair, you don't have to have a vote on the other ones first.
Yeah. We did not vote on that one, did we? Okay. We'll put a pause here and go back and vote on the already standing committees. The school board representatives for Governor's School, Code RVA, and the advisory committees. All right. Let me have a motion on that one first.
I make a motion that the current seated board members for the governor's schools and specialty programs and the advisory committees, review committee, and a strategic steering...strategic plan steering committee remain as was apparent in the '24 year.
And a second?
I'll second.
All right. Thank you. And all in favor? Just an aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Now, all right. So we're on with...we're going to fast forward back to where we stopped, which is the discussion of the...these new committees. All right.
Madam Chair?
Yes, Ms. Hurt?
As was so appropriate last night that we saw with presenting to the public the information on the...oh, gosh, I don't want to call it the year-round calendar, but I...
Balance.
Balance calendar. There you go. Two in particular, I think, that are very good to have public input, and hopefully, we can get people more excited about this than some of our other advisory committees, are the finance standing board committee, because I know I have a lot of people that ask me questions regarding our budgets and finances, and also, our policies have come up. So at least those two standing committees are very important. And on these standing committees, it's recommended, you can see what I emailed you, that usually, two board members, superintendent, you don't have to have a legal counsel, but it's good if you do, but not necessary. At least have one citizen appointed to serve on the policy committee, and also, it's very similar to the finance committee, but typically, in that, the difference would be the finance officer, the board clerk typically serves. You don't really need a legal representative there. I just think that is good governance, and if you look into the governance of school boards, those two standing committees are highly recommended across the state for all school boards. As I said, I'm not going to read all the information that I sent you, but there is quite a bit there. The other two standing committees, I mean, they're nice. I think they're better for larger school systems. We don't...I think our staff, dealing with academics and discipline so forth, I think we've got that pretty much covered by our students' rights and responsibilities on discipline and on curriculum. Staff has been very good at presenting to us any new curriculum additions and what's the latest going on there. So that's my thoughts on that. But I think policy and finance tend to be the major concerns of the public, and so maintaining transparency is giving the public an opportunity to be a player in that information.
Okay. Board members that want to make comments about this. Dr. Taylor?
Mrs. Hurt, I would have a question. Like, how does the public have more involvement going to a committee model versus what we have right now, when there's already opportunities with multiple finance meetings, budget preparation meetings, which we'll start that in next month, when there's opportunities for them to come and hear and to share and to ask questions and then...
Okay. Well, that's the problem that people say. They love hearing what we have to say, but they liked last night because they got their questions answered immediately, and they felt like they were participants. I've had several calls and emails this morning that people that watched online or came, and they even asked, could they meet with more of us regarding it? They want to talk more about it. So dialogue is always good between people to solve a problem, come up with a better policy, what have you. Us just presenting and them getting up and saying yea, nay, and their thoughts on it, that's not really a dialogue between two people learning from each other. Like, we can't say, wait a minute, that's not exactly right. Let me explain how it works, or vice versa to them. So that's why standing committees give an opportunity for that dialogue. And I do hope last night was very appropriate, that we do, if you choose not to adopt standing committees, that like, when we get a little bit more into the budget, that we have something like we had last night, that we have a opportunity, the public can come and talk, and that we're not sitting up here like, okay, this is what it is, that we're down with them, hearing what they have to say, their suggestions.
No.
So they feel a parting to it. And I think that's what we've missed, that people don't feel like...like, people were convinced last night, Michelle can tell you as we left, that the decision had been made, that we were going to do that calendar change. And Michelle and I go, no, 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 no. That is not the case. So that's what we...that's what I want the public to know, that we are here, we are listening, we're partners, we're teamed together. We're going to listen what you have to say, you listen to what we have to say, and we're going to meld it together to come up with the best solutions.
Last night was a forum, an open forum discussion. You're talking about a whole another level of bureaucracy doing a committee. So I'm all for transparency, I'm all for public input and all those things, but I don't think we need to have another level of bureaucracy with a committee.
It's not really...
We can go ahead and do forums where people can come and share and have their questions answered and do all that. We don't need a standing committee.
But this is where they...people are working on contributing. So let's go back and back up. So like, when we were doing the model policy, we wrote it and people listened. But if you follow a policy committee format, ultimately, it's our responsibility to write that policy. But before you got to that point, you had a policy committee. The policy committee's not going to make the decision. This is...this really is contributing the information that is helpful and coming up with a good policy that your constituents and people are happy with. So let's say, let's back up and just look at the model policy, because that was very controversial. People didn't understand, and people had concerns. So if you had a policy committee, the policy committee would meet, this is what this group feels, and they want to recommend to the school board, this is the policy that the...you know, of course, you have board members on it. This is what we've come up together, and it's up to the school board to look at it and evaluate it, make changes that they deem responsible. It gets away from the perception that the decisions are just made and the public's not asked. And, yeah, I know, we put stuff for Google Docs and for feedback, but let's face it, like, on the model policy, maybe 80 people answered the survey. When you've got 30...what do we have? Three...no, 3,900 kids in the school, 30,000-plus people in Powhatan County, we're not getting a good...people are lazy. They're not going to go do Google Docs and stuff. But that's my opinion...
I think you're making my own argument for me. You're talking about a committee, and you're saying that most people aren't going to participate.
No, no, no. In surveys, people don't like to...
Surveys. Well, even if we said, hey, there's an open opportunity, I think what you're saying is most people wouldn't participate in a survey. It's coming down to a select group of people that are tasked with making a decision or presenting an opinion to the board.
But the optics are, we, as the school board, put out there that we have these two standing committees. And it's just like I got an email today, that the board supervisors asked me who I knew that could be on the Economic Development Authority for Powhatan County. They look for citizens so that citizens have an opportunity to have input. And citizens feel they have more input when it's not, we're sitting up here looking down at them, that we're all sitting together coming up with solutions. That is the classic way of getting everybody to buy in on what the final product is and not have division and contention. That's the whole point of these particular committees. I don't think we're small enough that we really...and I just wanted to be fair and share the research I did on the four types of standing committees. I don't really think we need it for discipline or curriculum. Fairfax County, yeah, maybe. Powhatan County, no. But we do do policies, and we do handle money, and people...those are two things that people get really spun up about. So this is where we can say, we are totally open to community involvement. We're asking for the public to serve and help make the suggestions, look at the budget, tell us, hey, yeah, we want a girls' soccer team at the middle school, and we're going to support that with our taxes, and we're going to make sure we sell it to the board supervisors.
Well, let me make this one point as well. I appreciate your passion and your concern for involving the community. But if you look at this finance standing committee, you're only selecting one citizen.
That's true.
How is that involving the community if you're only putting one citizen, and it calls for, also, on your policy review, one citizen? So you've got two people that are going to represent all of Powhatan County?
Well, and along with having these committees, if they're running correctly, that committee meets and has what we had last night. That's the appropriate way of handling it. So that committee is gathering the information from the public and encouraging people to come in and speak.
I...I don't see where we can logistically do all that with our staff members. You're asking us to, I think, ask our people already on staff to do six more meetings and six more sessions of...wait a minute, six more sessions of work. And here's why...where my objections come from this. I would rather see us do more forums, open sessions, simply because, listen to what we do with finance. Our school board has a monthly review of expenses.
On?
We do budget workshops where all money that can be...is going to be spent can be seen and accounted for its use. Any changes around this policy is brought to the board. Any movement of money is shown and discussed at the different meetings. You have an audit of the monies in the schools that is done periodically, quarterly, by your finance. That's your internal audit. And you have an annual audit from an auditing firm. I think our finances are in, from my perspective, the best condition they have been in a very, very long time, and very transparent to the people in our community. I'm sorry, I don't...if there's...the budget time is the time for people to come in and make their comments. In regards to policy, I see this as, we are already paying V S B A, who sends out recommended changes. These changes are already reviewed by attorney. Now, this is a purchase service. However, what they send us out is related to the legislative action in our general assembly. So we receive this policy, it's reviewed by the leadership team, the action is then taken. Anything that needs to come into it or come out, go into it or come out of it, specifically for Powhatan County, is when we get involved in it as central office staff and then as school board. You monthly review all of those policies. Are you taking the time to do those, go through those policies, and are you making recommendations from that set of policies that's given to you? Those policies are then posted for the community to read and make suggestions on. Those policies that are needing work, we hold special work sessions for them. I really don't see a need...anything that we implement as a policy would be run by our legal counsel before we implemented it in as a final. We may vote on it, but it still goes for final approval through our attorney. But the entire board reviews and votes on the input on policies, and we take into consideration the information that our constituents post on the surveys. I just...and again, if you have a policy that you want more input from the community, I think, again, a forum is a better place to get more input from more people, because this committee is only one...taking in one person.
Okay. For first off, on the policy reviews that we do, that is by code. You have to review all your policies every five years, I believe.
That's correct.
And so that is just correcting for grammar, grammatical errors. If a slight legislature change has occurred, it's not so much a legal opinion that the V S B A sends out. That is just corrections because of legislation code is changed on a particular policy. That's not...when...I'm talking about situations, and it's not going to come up real often. You would not use this committee for things like that to go through, because you have to review by code. You have to review your policy over every five years. You have to go through every policy, or you're in violation of code. With this is, as new policies need to be formed, as we've had to add new policies in the past... as new policies need to be formed, as we've had to add new policies in the past two years, that's when this is used. This is not something that's used, like I said, for correcting if the amount allowed for, I don't know, lunch or whatever. You don't get people involved in that. That's, and there are other services besides VSBA that does policy reviews. So, I mean, it's, it's, that's, they put out their legal opinion on things like the model policy, but you do not adopt and follow them. You get your constituents' input, just like the cell phone policy. When Yonkin, Governor Yonkin came out and stated he wanted bell to bell, each school district wrote their own policy on that. You didn't have to follow a set policy that a lawyer laid out for you. So that's what something like this is used.
And wasn't it, wasn't it great that we'd already done that?
Yeah, I think we led the charge on that.
There you go, me too.
Because we, we were smart, because we are smart. We want to be cutting edge. We might be small, but we're mighty and smart and stay on the cutting edge. The whole idea, like I said, I've just studied a lot on governance, educational background, managing in corporate America and so forth, that this is good governance training for that down the road, boards turn over, that having things like this in place, like, and like I said, you're not doing every little petty policy change. That would be insane. You're talking about the big things. And you could go a whole year and not even have anything big time hit you. This is the things that get the public riled up, to get people involved in helping write the policies. And the same thing you could say about the advisory committees. We have some advisory committees, I know, where there's one person from the public on it. But we can say, hey, we're trying to get people involved. Another thing, I don't like to criticize our website, but I've had people ask me where our policy stuff is, and it's kind of hard to explain to someone who's not a parent of a student. Okay, you got to go to board docs here, not the authenticated one, but wait a minute. And so I have them on the phone telling them how to do that, right? Okay? So, you know, it's hard for the average community person to find what's happening in our schools when it comes to policy and finances and that sort of thing, looking at our website. I'm not criticizing our website, because it's improved drastically in two years. But I'm just saying, it is not easy to find information, like the Students' Rights and Responsibility. That's a little tricky for people to find that, too. You have to walk them through that.
All right. Let's stay, let's stay on focus on these committees.
Yeah, I know, I'm just saying, that this all pertains back to like, the policy and the finance thing. When it comes to budget, people aren't, they don't want, they don't think that we're doing anything nefarious with the money during the year. They just want input to, to be able to talk about what's important to them that we're budgeting for. Like, just like that group of parents came and we couldn't answer them about the girls soccer team. You know, they just want to be able to talk about that at budget time and say, this is really important to me. I got people that are, really want math textbooks, hard paper textbooks for kids.
All right. Let's, let's, any other comments by board members?
Basically, on my research, and I went to a training course several weeks ago sponsored by the SBMA, which is School Board Members Association, they were recommending that we have some of these committees in place, again, in case of turnover and other board officers, you know, being voted in, voted off, and changing, that these are pretty much set in standard. So based off of that training, I thought that, you know, at least two of these would be very important for us to consider to have committees. And my preference would be the, the Finance Committee and also on the, where's the, the, on the policy one. All right. Ms. Wade?
I just, I, I see the, the purpose behind it, but at the point that you're having additional meetings, so you have, so it wouldn't be all of us on a, like, a policy review committee, so we all wouldn't be reviewing the policy. So you'd have, it says, I think, four times a year. Would you have the open forum, the four times a year, or, I'm just not sure what it is that this policy review committee and the Finance Committee would be doing separately than what we're already doing. If you only have one person, I mean, we can't get people, you know, people don't want to come in for the budget workshop, so are they, is the only reason they're coming in is because it's an open forum? Because you can lose control of those. Like, it can become chaotic, people can get upset and angry, and that can become a problem, if you're having that type of thing without rules. And, and I feel like when a lot of times we have the public comment period, like with the soccer players, we were able to express what we thought at our comment time, at the end. So I'm just not sure what, I'd be, almost be afraid if you only had one and you had, you know, so let's say Susan and I are on the policy review committee and we have one other person and Beth, what exactly are we, I don't, I'm not sure what exactly we were doing, because I'm reviewing them, you know...
But like, Madam Chair, to answer her, her comment, I don't think it's necessary to have a set number of meeting time. I think it's as the need arises. Like, like I said, with like, model policy, you know, model policy, the controversial policies that people, that we have to write totally anew.
Right. I, I think that as our board moves forward with those kind of situations, that it, we were better together as a group of all five of us being input in at the same time. We know exactly, it's not a, I think, one of the things that frustrated me so much with the book committee, we weren't all involved in the birthing of that committee, and it was, you were, if you weren't one of the two people involved in the start of that committee, you were continually asking questions about it. So, and so were the constituents. So I feel that it's more important that we work on doing forums to have these discussions on things as the need arises. But that's just my two cents. Dr. Taylor?
Can I add, just to reiterate some of the statements I made earlier? I just see it as another level of bureaucracy, an unneeded level of bureaucracy, that in a way, might micromanage our superintendent and her staff. Not adding very many participants, as has been noted from our community, so it's not really adding a great input there. And we're talking about forums, that's different. That's not a committee, that's a forum. And with that said, we don't need a committee to have a forum. We can have a forum as a board with our staff sitting alongside of us to help answer questions. So we don't need another level of bureaucracy to do our job that we've been elected to do. And with that said, it's not a committee's responsibility to keep continuity in our school district. I mean, I would think that if we had a standing committees and we are appointing people to these committees from the community, then that's going to change when the board changes. So it doesn't make sense, then, that you would have continuity, guaranteed continuity there. But that's not, that's not the job of committee. Committees always change every single year. We just went through some committee assignments. And yes, they didn't change, but they could have changed. So that, we always reorganize. So that, that's not going to guarantee continuity. The continuity comes from elections that happen every four years that bring five new board members and we move forward from there. And so that's what we're elected to do. So I don't think this is a need in our, in our division, and I would like to move on. And so can we put this to a vote?
Yes, yes, that's our next thing. Anyone else have any other comments? All right, let's have a vote. Can we put this as a, now, a motion to either accept it or not? Can I get a motion on that, please?
You already have a motion. That was a motion to discuss.
No, we had only a motion to discuss.
I mean, I think the motion should come from Mrs. Hertz, since she is bringing it to us.
Okay. I made a motion to institute two standing committees, Policy and Finance Committee, and as per, with the information emailed to the board members.
Thank you, thank you. Do I have a second on that?
Sure, I will make a second on that.
Thank you, Ms. Ward. All right, let's take a vote, please. District one?
Yay.
Two?
No.
Three?
No.
Four?
No.
Five?
Yes.
All right. The motion is defeated three to two. All right, let's move on. All right, approving your board meeting dates. Whoops. All right, give me just a second. I clicked on something and sent it all to space. Do we see any objections or concerns in any of those dates that are posted here?
Madam Chair?
Yes, sir.
Madam Chair, the June date, we, I know last year went to the third week in June, and honestly, it's to accommodate my schedule. I'm always out of town the second week.
Okay.
So I'm asking for some, if it's the wish of the board to accommodate the fact that I can't be here in town that week, but I'll be here the following week. So if we could move it to the 17th?
To move our June board meeting to the 17th?
Yes, ma'am.
Madam Chair?
To be honest, I'm out of town that day.
And I am as well.
We shall keep it on the 10th.
Sorry.
Okay. Anything else on our board meetings?
Madam Chair?
Yes, Ms.?
On the meeting on May 6th, that's the first Tuesday of the month. Is there a reason why we're going with the first Tuesday of the month? That is the night the Planning Commission meets. I don't think there's anything hot that may be happening with the Planning Commission, but I always hate it when the school board conflicts with the Planning Commission, particularly in the times now when things are so controversial with land use in our county.
A reasoning, Dr. Taylor?
Because of the deadlines that the county has and trying to align us, making sure that they have our final budget before they have to vote on it. So...
Okay.
Any changes?
Okay. Is that sufficient?
We can certainly shift to a different day of the week.
Net, I mean, let's hope that there won't be any solar farms, wind farms, what have you.
All right, so it looks like that the June date that was needed to change cannot change, and the May date will stay the same. Any other? All right. Then we need an approval of our board, of these dates. Could I get that in a motion, please?
I make a motion that we approve the boarding, board meeting dates, locations and times.
All right, do I get a second?
I'll second.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Ms. Ward? Ms. Wade? Did you not say? Oh, okay, I didn't, I didn't hear you, sorry, an aye. All right, motion carries five to zero. All right, public comment period? Nothing? Nope. All right, and moving right along, convening to close session.
Madam Chair, I'll be happy to move us into that if you...
Thank you, Dr. Taylor. I appreciate that offer. Go right ahead.
Recommend making a motion to enter into closed session to discuss the admission and discipline of specific students pursuant to Code 2.2-3711A2 and A4, the assignment, appointment, performance, disciplining, and release of contract for specific school employees, including the evaluation of the superintendent pursuant to Code 2.2-3711A1, to consult with legal counsel and briefings by staff members pertaining to actual or probable litigation pursuant to Code 2.2-3711A7, and discussion of information subject to the exclusion in Subdivision 2 or 14 of Code 2.2-3705.2, where discussion in an open meeting would jeopardize the safety of any person or the security of any facility, building, structure, information, technology system, or software program, and discussion of reports or plans related to the security of any governmental facility, building, or structure, or the safety of persons such as using such facility, building, or structure to consult with legal counsel, and briefings by staff members pertaining to actual or probable litigation, Codes 2.2-3711A1, A2, A4, A7, and 2.2-3705.2, Subdivision 2, 4.
Can I get a second? All in agreement?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Thank you. That carried five to zero, too. We're now in closed session.